Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the October meeting of the East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees to order, Ms. Barrios, would you call the role, please?
Yes, our bill Brazil. President, Michael Fowler, Victor Garza.
Yeah.
John Massengill.
Here.
Mr. Moke.
Here.
Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, moving to Agenda Item Two, Executive Session. We will be moving into Executive Session as our first order of business. So, the Board of Trustees on October the nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, beginning at five thirty-four P.M. convened in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Government's Code, Section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, Consultation with Attorney, and five-five-one point zero-seven-four, Personnel Matters. Thank you. Good evening. The Board ended its closed meeting at six forty-five P.M. on October the nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen. No action was taken in closed meeting. Agenda Item Three, Reconvene from Closed Session for Action Relative to Items Considered During Closed Session.
Uh, Mr. President, I move to deny the Level Three Parent Complaint, and I further move that the Board deny all requested remedies.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Barrios to deny the Level Three Grievance and All Remedies Requested. Chair Lynn, entertain a second.
Second.
We have a second by John Massengill. Is there any comments, any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, Prayer and the Pledge. Mr. Toscano, please.
Mr. Trustees, at this time I'd call Ms. Marialice Gomez, Principal of Heritage Middle School.
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, Mr. Bryant, and Trustees. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to showcase the many great things going on at Heritage, beginning with the introduction of one of our eighth grade students, Journey Sepeda. Journey has a distinct honor of being nominated as the Superintendent Student of the Month, and she will lead us tonight with the prayer and pledge of allegiance to the American Flag and to the Texas Flag. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas Flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please bow your heads for the prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we are gathered here today to ask for your blessings to all the teachers, supporting staff, administration, and school board of our East Central family. Lord, help us spread kindness to uplift others in their time of need, and to be more thankful for the blessings you have passed on to us. Lord, guide us in seeking our true potential and keep us on our successful paths. Amen.
You may be seated. Tonight's presentation is a video highlighting students, teachers, and parents at various functions during the first eight weeks of school. And as you will see and hear, we are focusing on the mindset that everything is possible, and all you have to do is dream big.
Hi, I'm Brianna, and I'm dreaming big about finding security at the campus. My goals to get there include researching on my own time, working hard in school, and focusing on my future.
My name's Stephanie, and I'm dreaming big about becoming a marine biologist. And I'm willing to get there by taking that school seriously, taking all my exam seriously, and taking as many science classes as I can.
Hi, my name's Melissa, and I'm dreaming big about being a professional chef.
Hi, my name's Texas Toscano, I'm dreaming big about becoming a private prosecutor. And my goals to get there are to gain an athletic scholarship or sometimes scholarships to go to Kansas Tech as a student.
Hi, my name's Charlie, and I'm dreaming big about being on, and my goal is to get there at Stanford High School. And my journey starts because I have a lot of people I can thank.
Natalie, and I am just a big girl. My goal is to, my goal is to get there on Dayton King. I'm dreaming big about becoming a prosecutor. And my goals to achieve it are to graduate high school, then graduate college, then to graduate law school.
Hi, my name is Joshua, and uh, my goal is to be a track star one day. And like, what I have to do to get there is like, eat good like food and take care of my body and work hard every day, just like, don't slack, just like, okay, believe, put in some effort.
My name is Esma, and I'm, my dream is about being an artist. And my goal to be an artist is um, have a great art school and have a lot of paintings and videos. And I dream big about making an anime. And to be a god in here, I have to draw really well and um, have big imagination.
Hi, I'm Austin, and my dream was to go into the middle because I love to write hard and I like to keep writing.
And that's a wrap. Good night.
I hope you enjoyed that. Thank you for everything. As school board members, we do have some chrysanthemums for you. They do symbolize optimism and joy. One last thing, and, and thank you for everything that you do for, not just for Heritage, but for the EC community. Mrs. Sepeda, if you'll be, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for sharing your journey with us tonight and every night. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. That's quite a video, some great students. Alright, moving on to Agenda Item Five, Awards and Recognitions.
Sir, Mr. President, Trustees, we have a few awards and recognitions that we would like to share with you today. So, Ms. Coles?
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, President Bryant, and Trustees. October is Employee Recognition Month, and we are excited this month that we will be recognizing a number of our outstanding employees. First, I would like to invite up Mr. Kevin Lemans. He is a building mechanic at ECDC. Kevin is being recognized for personal accountability. An employee deserving of recognition for personal accountability is exceptional at taking ownership of situations and tasks that they're involved in. On his first day, Kevin wasted no time in completing a building inspection and creating his own work orders. He's gone about filling them in a conscientious and precise manner. We would like to thank him for being a great example of someone who takes personal accountability for his work. Kevin was nominated by Principal Damon Trainer. So, thank you, Mr. Trainer. And um, we would like to recognize him at this time, so, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. And I believe Kevin's family is here, if y'all wouldn't mind standing up and being recognized as well. Thank you. Next, also being recognized for personal accountability is Whitney Waddell. Would you please come forward? Whitney was hired this year to teach the students pursuing a CNA certification. She came to us with a plethora of experience and a high level of education. When we began completing the paperwork to certify Ms. Waddell as our new CNA instructor, the application was denied because Ms. Waddell had not worked one full year in a long-term nursing home facility. Ms. Waddell knew how hard her students had been working for over three years to obtain their CNA. So, rather than looking at options for different certificates for these students, Ms. Waddell worked with the district to bring in a supplemental instructor and actually took on a second job in a nursing home to gain the experience necessary to be certified. She's currently teaching full-time, as well as working on the weekends as a nursing supervisor at a local nursing home. And from what I understand, she saved three lives the first weekend she was there. So... Whitney was nominated by our CTE Specialist, Dr. Amanda Holman. And will Whitney's family also please stand up and be recognized? Thank you. Good job, Whitney. Next, I'd like to call up Cambry Palosik, Suzette Ariola, and Jasmine Hales. These ladies are being recognized for collaboration, and to speak more about it, Ms. Claudia Barrios is gonna... As Claudia speaks about their accomplishments, I'm going to play a, I'm gonna just forward a PowerPoint up above them.
So, I just, the Dick Pink game was a couple of weekends ago. We were in Dallas, and um, I just wanted to recognize Coach Hell, um, Coach Hayes, who went against her, well, one camera, because they went above and beyond, um, like always. Um, we, we do what we do for our kids, but I think it's important to recognize staff because they feel appreciated. And I would also like to thank my parents. I try not to cry because they went above and beyond, both freshmen, R.C., J.B., and the girls did an awesome job on the posters, and it was just really awesome. Uh, even Ms. Cameron even was texting me the baskets, and thank you, Mr. Massengill, for winning one of the items, and uh, I was for asking her for numbers. Yes, I was. So, I really do appreciate, we are a family, and I really truly believe that, so, thank you. So, parents and many of the girls are here, please stand.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And congratulations to everyone this evening. Alright, we've had no one sign up for public comments, so at this time, we're gonna take a five-minute recess and let those of you who need to go home and do homework, or those of you who need to go home and grade homework, go home at this point. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move on with the rest of our meeting at this point, with Agenda Item Seven, Superintendent's Reports. Mr. Toscano, please.
Yes, sir. Trustees, this month's personnel report can be found in your electronic packet on page eleven. Not very much activity, uh, the activity that is there, I believe you're familiar with. If you would like any additional information, uh, let me know, and we'll be happy to provide that for you.
Alright, moving on to departmental goals.
Trustees, in your packets, you'll see this year's departmental goals. The goals that you'll see included are going to include three major categories, as has been the case in recent years. They're going to include performance objectives for performance, for culture and climate, and for fiscal responsibility. Those are aligned, of course, with the board goal and performance objectives. You'll find goals for personnel, custodial, services, maintenance, technology, child nutrition, transportation, health services, and the ECPD. And again, if you would like any additional information about those goals, let me know, and we'll be happy to get that for you.
And during the year, we'll be getting reports back?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We'll, we'll be hearing from each of those departments throughout the year, with their, their leadership presenting the board with the goals update. And of course, answering any questions the board may have at that time, receiving any feedback.
Alright, Item C, two thousand and seventeen State Accountability Reports.
Yes, sir. This time I'd like to call Taffy Hertz up for just a moment to share with you guys what would be included in that, this particular item. Well, we'll talk about it. So, uh...
Put her on the spot.
You, you will, but, but you may just cover for me if I miss anything. So, what's in your packet are the formal accountability reports. Of course, you're, you're aware of all that is included in those documents, um, as previously discussed. We'll also be bringing to the board our official taper report later in the year, as is required by statute, where this will be formally presented in a public, uh, hearing environment. And so, you're very familiar with what's in this, uh, in these reports, and so, you know, we'd be happy to discuss it further or provide any additional information regarding any of the reports in there, or any of the campuses represented by those reports.
And a construction update.
Mr. Selby, are you prepared to share a few comments with the board? Not that Taffy wasn't. She had prepared, she had prepared me, uh...
Sure, that was a task, but uh...
It was, it was.
Mr. Toscano, Board President Bryant, Board Members, uh, if you look in your packet, your folder today, there's a very brief update on the, uh, construction. I was just gonna go over some general things for each, uh, project that's underway right now. I am glad to say that all the projects are underway. We have contractors on board, and, and construction is taking place everywhere. Uh, for Tradition Elementary School, we have, of course, the, the school itself well under construction. There were some delays due to weather and some, also some challenges because of rain and some concrete, but that has been resolved, and they're moving forward, and anticipate them getting back on track very quickly with our assistance, I'm sure, uh, any way we can help them. Uh, the, uh, the anticipated date of completion is, is in July of two thousand and eighteen. I think we'll be able to get that unless there's some other unforeseen issues that come up. The other projects on that site, though, are also worthy of mention as well. We have the tran, Satellite Transportation Center, uh, that's on the site as well. That's also well underway. It's a much simpler project, mostly asphalt work, some, uh, utility infrastructure work as well. That's probably pretty close to around seventy percent complete, so they're, they're doing well there. The other project that will take place out there that hasn't started construction yet is the improvements to FM fifteen eighteen and FM thirteen forty-six. As a result of putting the, uh, the school at that site and preparing not only for that school, but for a future middle school, Tech Dot is requiring that we do improvements to those roads around our property. And, uh, that's under design right now. It's, it's, uh, the final review is underway through both the civil engineer and based on some of the, uh, geotech s, uh, information that they've received. That'll be going to Tech Dot for review, and once that's approved, which I'm sure there will be some amendments to the plan, usually are with Tech Dot, uh, that'll go out for, um, proposal to the marketplace. First, I'll come to you next month with a delivery method that you hopefully would approve for us to go forward with. We'll go out to the marketplace, December, January timeframe, and bring that project to you for consideration in, at the January Board meeting. Uh, that should take about three months to complete weather, you know, uh, participating in that timeline with us. Uh, so that's, uh, the, you know, the St. Hedwig Project is, is well underway. The Gary Patterson Center for the Performing Arts and the East Central High School renovations are also well underway. The, uh, the Performing Arts Center is, um, uh, they've completed all the utility infrastructure. They are now, uh, doing the concrete work for the pads or for the foundations there. Uh, they are, um, a little bit behind there as well, because, partly because of weather and not partly because of, they just needed to get themselves together, and we've been working with them on that. And, uh, but once again, uh, the anticipation is for that to be completed also in July of two thousand and eighteen. Um, the band, the, the renovations to the varsity fieldhouse, freshman locker room, and the dance and cheer facility have been completed. Uh, they still have a few punch items that they need to knock out, but, uh, they are being utilized by our students, and we're very happy to see that happening. The renovations planned for the band hall and for the areas that are gonna be vacated by choir and by, uh, the theater arts folks that will be moving into the new Performing Arts Center, those will take place over the summer of two thousand and eighteen, and they should be able to get that done before school starts. The additions and renovations, which are the other major phase of the bond program, as you know, are where we're gonna provide addi, new additions to and renovations to Salado Intermediate School, Harmony Elementary School, um, Con Valley Elementary School, and Sinclair Elementary School. All four of those projects' additions are underway. The plan is for those to be completed during this school year, uh, for completion in the summer of two thousand and eighteen, and then they will be going into the various phases of renovation of each one of those facilities. Uh, the contractor there, Doris, has been working very well with this. Uh, the principals so far have been very pleased with the work that they have done and with the cooperation that they've provided. The, um, this is the first update I've given to you. This is a very general set of information. Uh, if you would like, be glad to come back whenever, Mr. Toscano, or you would like me to come back and give you updates. Uh, if you have specific things that you'd like to hear about, be glad to let, find out about that, so I can provide you with information you really want. Uh, but, um, we will continue this process. Uh, if you recall during the last bond, I would have little PowerPoints with photographs of the progress being made and, and general updates, and I can do that as well, if you'd like. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Have there been any issues or concerns that you think are going on at either the Traditions or at the Fine Arts Center that we should be aware of, or I mean, everything's pretty much on schedule?
No, they're not on schedule.
No, I'm sorry, they're a month behind, but I mean, are there anything?
Well, the, as I said, at the, uh, at Tradition, the, the big challenge there was whenever the rains were hitting during some concrete pours that compromised some of the, uh, concrete that they had poured. Uh, they are now, they have, should be completed chipping out what they need to, to take that out, and then do the corrections as provided to them by our engineers, so that the, uh, in this particular case, the footings on one of the foundations will be oversized, so that they make sure that it will provide the structural strength it needs. So, yeah, there have been some challenges there, but, uh, through various efforts, uh, those have been addressed, and they're moving forward with that. They should be able to make up, once again, weather permitting. They should be able to make up some of the time they lost during that interim period where we had to basically stop that work, so that we could make sure it was corrected properly.
Uh, excuse my ignorance, but, I mean, I did work in construction for a year, but do they not look at weather reports, and, I, I mean, it's common sense that you, you see that a storm is coming, you're not gonna pour, I'm sorry, I don't mean to ask stupid questions or...
It's not a stupid question. It, it is their responsibility, that's part of the means and methods of the contractor's responsibility of, of constructing a facility for you. And we don't tell them when they pour or when they don't pour, because then we would assume some liability there, and we're not the contractor, they are. They're the experts in that field. And so, yes, they are, uh, responsible for making sure that, that one, that they, uh, everything's prepared according to specifications, that the inspections are done properly in a timely manner. Anything found in those inspections is corrected prior to the, in this particular case, concrete pours. And, uh, as a result, there is always was oversight on this, these projects. There's now even more oversight on those projects.
And the team that is out there, I mean, have we looked at, have they worked on similar projects?
Yes.
It's just a little concerning when, like, are they brand-new guys, or are they, uh...
No, they're actually, the, the superintendent's season seems to be very... No, they're actually...the superintendent is seasoned, seems to be very well versed in what he's doing. I think they just got caught in something that they took a little bit of a gamble and got caught.
And Widow has a very good reputation.
Yes.
It's just it's concerning when, you know, there's gonna be weather delays and there's gonna be...but when you, you know, state that the concrete pours, like the actual foundation, there's issues, that's a little concerning.
Yes, and that's why there was basically an order to stop work until it was addressed, identified, and analyzed and remedies were developed and provided and the contractor is going forward with those remedies. But yes, it is concerning.
I know you're on top of it, so I don't doubt...
Well, it's a team effort.
I mean, and Mr. Morgan as well, so I...
Morgan, Mr. Preer, Ms. Cavassos, and then the team at LPA and the supporting design engineers and other folks.
I have no doubt in our team, but it's just a little concerning when...
I understand.
Bring up foundation, you're like, whoa, that's the...you don't need to, you know, be five years down there.
No. I would agree, and that's, like I said, that's why it was addressed fairly quickly and took some time to make sure everybody was on the same page.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoban. And upcoming events?
Just for a moment, if you take a look at your calendar and miscellaneous packet, a couple of things I want to point out, trustees. Next Monday, the 23rd, is a student holiday. However, staff will be in training on that day. In November, early voting starts on...actually, it's in October. On the 31st, early voting starts and goes through November 3rd. And we will have a site, as typical here in the boardroom, for early voting. Election Day is on the 7th, and we will have voting locations at Pecan Valley, Harmony, Sinclair, as well as the high school in the gym three four-year...or gym one four-year, sorry. Regularly scheduled board meeting in November is on the 14th, which is a Tuesday. Due to the Thanksgiving holiday, we will be doing that on Tuesday as opposed to Thursday as we typically do before this break. District will be closed the week of the 19th through the 25th for the Thanksgiving holiday. If you have any questions, the calendar? Yes, sir. Board meeting on the 14th.
Okay, so one other thing to add to your calendar, we'll be having a special board meeting on November the 28th, at which time we will go over our community accountability proposals.
November 28th.
November the 28th. We'll start that meeting at 5:30 or thereabouts. Soon as you can get here after 5:30, I anticipate that being a very fruitful and somewhat lengthy evening. So wear your tennis shoes, not your truck shoes. We'll get comfortable and we'll get down to work. Based on that, for those of you who are here, might ask you to relate to your staff that this evening, we spent very little time on estate accountability. On November the 28th, we will spend a lot of time on community accountability, and that's our plan going forward. It's what we promised the community, and that's what we're gonna deliver. State accountability results we have in our board packet, I promise you, the board members will look at them and take them in the...with the reverence that they deserve. But we are gonna focus on our community, not on the state. So we've been telling that story for a while. It's our story, we're sticking to it, and the rubber is fixing to hit the road. So if you feel like relating that, please do so. All right. Item 8A, 2017-2018 amended salary schedule. Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, in an effort to continue to find innovative ways to fill vacant bus driver positions, the business office and I did a little bit of research in working with TASB to try and find a way to offer the ability for other full-time employees, hourly, non-exempt employees, to also be able to moonlight, if you will, and take on a second job as a bus driver. You might ask why we hadn't done that previously. Well, because of the Fair Labor Standards requirements, there's weighted overtime for employees who are in other full-time positions. And what that simply would mean is that where route pay might be $75 a route roughly for a person whose hourly wage is $17 or $18 an hour with weighted overtime, that route becomes significantly more costly to the district for that person to drive it, and it creates inequities. So in an effort to try and find a solution to that in working with TASB, we were able to find out that although we pay drivers route pay, then in this particular instance, we could actually design an hourly pay schedule and that the hourly pay for driving did not have to match the hourly pay that they might get in their other role. So in your packet is a one-page document with a few columns and about three or four rows, and I just wanted to kind of show you a couple of scenarios that the business office ran and why we're proposing this to you tonight. So if you were a paraprofessional, full-time paraprofessional, and you were making $13 an hour and you were to drive in addition to your full-time paraposition, you would make $12 an hour as a driver. With weighted overtime, you would make $73.33 a route. Average route pay is $72.80. You can see that that's very aligned. So not all hourly wage employees, depending on their position, make the same hourly rate. So we gave two other examples. One is a transportation office employee who would be making $14.19 an hour. Same scenario, $12 an hour. You would see that their route pay would equate to $74.92, again, give or take a couple of dollars, very equitable. And then lastly, if we take an auxiliary employee making $16.73 an hour, but pay them, again, $12 an hour to drive a route, they would make $78.31. So it's not dollar for dollar because it is influenced a bit by their primary job hourly wage, but in doing this, we avoid the previous challenge of creating inequities and not being fiscally responsible while at the same time creating opportunities to expand the pool of possible drivers to fill much-needed vacant bus routes. And so what we're asking you today is to consider $12 an hour for CDL positions as payment for full-time employees who also drive. And if you're a full-time employee and you're driving a non-CDL route, it would be $10 an hour. And a non-CDL route would mean you wouldn't need a CDL to drive, say, the van. We shuttle students in different circumstances and we don't do it in a bus all the time, and so you wouldn't need a CDL to drive those, so that would be a $10 an hour as opposed to $12 an hour. If you were to approve this tonight, we would be amending our employee salary schedule to be inclusive of this option.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the 2017-2018 amended salary schedule as presented.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the 2017-2018 amended salary schedule. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Fellers, their second. We have a second by Ms. Barrientos. Any questions, any comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, reappointment of directors to East Central Foundation.
Trustees, I am recommending the reappointment of Don Barnett from CPS Energy, Joe Ritterhaus from Ritterhaus and Associates, and Gretchen Stepke from Holt Caterpillar to three-year terms as directors of the East Central School Foundation, effective January 1, 2018.
My recommendation from the superintendent to reappoint some of the existing directors to the East Central Foundation. Chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion by Ms. Barrientos. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Feller. Any comments, any questions? I think those people do a wonderful job. I think a lot of y'all know them. They give quite a bit of their time to the organization and quite a bit of their energy to the organization. So wonderful people, wonderful people. All right. We have a recommendation, a motion and a second to reappoint directors of the East Central Foundation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, a consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have an item pulled from the consent agenda? Chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Fellers, their second. We have a second by Ms. Barrientos. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Toscano?
No, sir.
Anyone else?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Holbert. Have we ever considered having like a star prep rally? I meant to ask you last month, for the kids. I know that'll pump them up and get them going and...just a thought.
We've gone through various stages of that, and I think some of the campuses have done it in the past. I think we've started moving away from it to try to emphasize the state accountability aspect of it. And so we tried to put a successful on the learning and the topic and kind of move away from it.
Yeah. Okay. Gritcha, thank you.
All right. With that, chair will entertain a motion. Sorry, go ahead.
I would like to add something to that really briefly. So we're in the process of doing a little research and auditing, if you will, our assessment program in the district. Very preliminary findings, but in that work, we're...we've got a consultant working with us, John Tanner, who is also working with us on the community-based accountability system and interviewing staff across the district. It was highly...he found that there's a high degree of evidence that students get most of the pressure around star testing from parents. And so it was interesting that he noted that. There were several other findings as well. But what we see in our schools is kids either avoiding coming to school, throwing up when they get off the bus, clinics are full, and it's a fear and anxiety around consequences, negative consequences that may come from not doing well on those assessments. We all know this, but it's not that we don't want kids to give their best and be really energized and encouraged about what they're about to undertake, but we also found that we unintentionally contribute to some of that anxiety if we're not careful. So that's kind of what we're coming from there.
Thank you. Well, we'll see if we can alleviate the kiddos' concerns like the staff. I'm not sure how successful we've been with the staff so far, but we'll see what we can do. All right. Anything else? Not the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Garza.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Feller. We are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you very much. Everybody have a great evening.